Call the meeting to order six o'clock. And you'll rise for the pledge of allegiance, please.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you would please remain standing for the invocation. I believe we have our father.
Good evening. You know, yesterday was President's Day, so I looked up a couple quotes from one of my heroes, Abraham Lincoln. So I wanted to share two of them. One quote he had was, "I don't like that man. I must get to know him better." And another quote he had was, "Sir, my concern is not whether God is on our side. My greatest concern is to be on God's side, for God is always right." So, Lord, we just, Lord, we thank you for this day. We lift up our President. We pray that you give him wisdom in the situation with Russia. Pray that you give our governor and mayor and council here in Allen Park wisdom. We ask for your protection over our city and all our employees and all the other citizens here. Amen.
Michael, you'll take the roll call, please.
All right, Mayor. Councilman Marikos.
Present.
Councilman Levin.
Here.
Councilman Schleit.
Present.
Councilman Valerius.
Here.
Councilman Boyd.
Here.
From Town Halli.
Here.
Mayor McLough.
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the agenda for this evening's meeting?
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Schleit. Second by Mr. Lally. Any corrections or changes? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion is passed. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the regular meeting of February 8th?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Valerius.
Second.
Second by Mr. Marikos. Any corrections? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Organizational business.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, residents. I have a two-hour report.
(laughing).
I'll try to keep it quick. Actually, it was really one page. And then, late this afternoon, we had some changes, and I felt that need to be right at the top. So, early this afternoon, we received notification, the Building Department, Matt Baker, received notification that they are going to finally close Roosevelt for the DTE project. So Roosevelt will be closed here at Southfield Road. It'll also be closed to local traffic at the Allen Road E-course intersection. And, but it'll be barricaded right at the BP station, so they can do their work. Basically, they're doing their work between the BP Station's driveway on Roosevelt and Southfield Road. But in order to do that, they have to have everything closed down. So that'll mean, most of traffic will be able to divert down Allen Road and then come back up to Southfield and make the turnaround or what you need to, and make the Michigan left. The truck traffic is going to be the one that's impacted probably the most, is that detour route will be Southfield Road to Dix Toledo, to Northline, to Allen Road, which will then turn into Pelham, and then they're back on their way to their destination at that point. So hopefully, they look at that beforehand and realize that'll be the case and go a different route altogether. But needless to say, they'll not be able to go down Allen Road, because that is not waited for trucks in the downtown area, I should say. So they're looking to start this on Thursday, the 24th. Looking at it, it'll probably last about 14 days with the closure, and then there'll be some impacts during the rest of the springtime, as they do concrete repair or asphalt repairs and that stuff. But for the closure itself, they said no more than 14 days. So I'm hoping it'll be sooner than that, but we're prepared for the most. Again, this is Corby Engineering, or Corby Energy Services is doing the work for DTE and the closure there. We have posted up on the Facebook page. I know it's been sent over to the Fire Department. We're trying to get to the Police Department, so they can share that out and get that word out to the difference, I think, trying to maybe see if Pat can get it on Parks and Rec, we'll get it over to the library. More and more place we can get this, the word out, be better off on that, so. That is the, that's the big project there. We thought it was going to come earlier this year, and it just took them a couple, a couple more weeks longer, as they had to go through, get MDOT approval for some closures and that. On the Facebook page, I did not include them here, but on the Facebook page, I did put pictures of the closures themselves, so that people can see them. That led to a couple questions. I thought about posting with no comments available, but I do like the comments, so I can interact with the questions. Snow emergencies, you get no comments. We know what's going on. But, you know, one resident asked if they could still access the post office. Yes, the post office will still be accessible, as will the other businesses. If you need to go to the fire station, that's still accessible. You just will not be able to get from Roosevelt to Southfield Road at that point in time, so. Kind of a long way to get, it's going to be closed in there. Just avoid the area if you can. Do need to say congratulations to Tom Murray. He was elected as the Vice Chair of the Downriver Community Conferences DPS, DPW Consortium Group. When we first started off here, when I got here with Bob Kitty back in 2015, there, not many of us, or not many of the staff here, were involved in a lot of the different organizations. In a community of our size, 28,000 people, we need to be involved. We're, we're not a small group when it comes to GLWA. We're a top-tier customer, so we're actively involved in a number of those, a number of those groups. I know Tom's, you know, was mentioned before. He's a co-chair. I have an education group I am the community sponsor with, and I think there's a couple other, you know, I think Amanda does some work. I know Bill Minor as well, on the sewer side. So being involved in that, it's important, and this is another one of those, where it really helps to be, to know who you're working with and your neighbors and so forth. So, congratulations to Tom for that. Matt Baker was letting me know that he's ready to start the resale, home resale, not home resale, the home sale inspection program. That'll start March 1st. We posted, that got posted, he'd asked for some input from somebody. It got sent to the Allen Parker. He got a lot of feedback. So he was able to make a couple changes now. This is the program that was actually approved 2019, you know, so it's just taking a long time. We planned on putting it together earlier. COVID came along. We're now ready to move forward and with Matt, and then he's got, Steve Wood started, so he's got some help, so we're ready to go. So that'll start March 1st. Next edition of the Allen Park Today Magazine will be out the week of March 14th. We've got a lot of nice articles coming in there, some more information. Matt has a lot of information on the program, the home, the sale, home sale inspection program. He also has a bit that should be in there about getting a permit, the process of getting the permit, and making sure as a homeowner, and typically, we see this with our senior citizen residents. They're sometimes talked into pulling that permit themselves, as the homeowner, as opposed to having the contractor pull it. And he tells you why that's a bad idea. I can use an example. I had a lady in Melvindale 20 years ago, pulled the permit for her house on Reed Street. Contractor came in, stripped the shingles, put the new roof on, and left the shingles at the base of the house. And she's calling, "You gotta make the contractor come out and take care of this." And they pulled the permit, and it was hers, the homeowner. You're the contractor. And so we were able to work with the court and get that taken care of. But a lot of times, that happens, and they're left holding the bag. So we want to make sure that doesn't happen. I think Matt did a great job of explaining that out thoroughly, how that works. Pat also has given a lot of information to Angie, our editor, and there's going to be a spread basically showing all the park locations, a map with those, and the brief description of the amenities at each one. So something that, this is a magazine you want to keep. You should be keeping all of them anyways, but this is the one you want to keep, because it's going to have some good information in there. So that'll come out the week of March 14th. And then just want to congratulate also James Colis from the Fire Department, 15 years on March 5th of this, this year. And Tawana Barnes in the Building Department, she'll have five years on March 6th. So we appreciate their longevity here with the city of Allen Park. I included also Jeff O'Reilly, I was hoping he was going to be here, but they're off on a vacation with the kids. I think it's winter break right now, too, so they took a little vacation there. But he shared this information with us, and it's very interesting, when he was talking about this at the department head, I mean, he kind of concerned a lot of us, because he said the age group of 50 to 79, and everybody's like, "Whoa, whoa, whoa." You know, we, you know, there's everybody in close to that room there. The young people seem to be very concerned, though. But this is serious about the fire death statistics, and we're going to get this posted up on our Facebook page as well. But looking at percentages, and they're talking, 61% of the deaths by origin started in the living room or kitchen, and so the question's why? Well, the materials that your products are now made of are a lot quicker to go up. He said something interesting, on a new house, they will only, if it's been burning for less than 15 minutes, they're likely to still go in. But anything, I think it was 15 minute was the threshold. Anything more than that, it's a surrounding drought. The problem that you have now is the materials being used are chipboard, and that goes up and doesn't have the stability that you see from the structures here. A lot of the structures here in Allen Park are still the old two-by-four solid wood, and that means a little bit different. So they, they're here in Allen Park, they treat a fire differently than they would if it's a new, new house in another community, or, and so are newer houses in the south end there, so. Interesting stats. We'll get that up on the Facebook page and share that along. And then just finally, we were here last Tuesday with the Historical Commission. I was fortunate, I left, I know that meeting lasted about two hours, they're about two hours. I know Nancy's been trying to get them done quicker in there, but they have a lot of, a lot of discussion going on, so that was some good stuff. But they got a number of projects they're working on. They're, they're definitely working on getting that, the museum packed up inside, so we can be ready to make a move once we get the word from the county on the, on the grant that we received, and which, which, which one we're going to have and so forth. They're going to be looking at painting the gazebo, they're working on some plastic caps for benches, maintenance on the handicap ramp. They're also looking to clean out the garage, possibly turn that into a showroom, create some sort of museum membership, which I think is a really good idea. They have a grant to purchase display cases that they're working on, and they're also getting ready to have some plan for a grand reopening. We did ask the Allen Park Today Magazine to reach out to Betty Nixdorf, and they did do that. That information article probably come out in the June edition, and by the time we do the June edition, I hope to be able to announce that we have a $300,000 grant from Wayne County for the, for the museum. So we're just going to hold that one back a little bit. Besides the fact that we're full in pages already, so we, unfortunately, got hit to the floor, but we're going to get that one back out for June, and hopefully have some good news to go along with it, so. That is everything I have.
I have a motion to accept and file the administrative report.
Take a motion?
Motion by Mr. Lally.
Second.
Second by Mr. Valerius. Any comments or questions?
Question. So for the Roosevelt, is it fixing the road, or, I'm trying to read, like?
Yeah, they're actually, DTE has a, has to have a new line, a new power line put in. It's not an overhead. I believe it's going underground through the manholes that they have there. Is that how you kind of understood it? So they're, they're doing some dr, boring, and it's from this manhole to that manhole.
Is it kind of like how they've been doing for residents in front of their houses with, like digging up? Yeah, or anything like, or is that completely different?
No, I think if they're doing a directional board, it's going to be more like how we've done our water mains in the last couple of years, where they'll dig a pit, they have a pit hole, and a machine with rods, and they're, they're shooting the rods through, and then as they get to the other side, or their, their second pit hole, they'll hook their line to, and they'll pull that back through. But it's just, I think unfortunate amount of traffic right there does not allow them to be able to get in there and do it cleanly without closing everything down.
Okay. Right. So I know that you have here that PDFD and DPS have been informed. I guess my only concern is, and there's probably nothing we can do about it, is that for, for the Fire Department, getting that access to Southfield is a pretty key part of getting to those rural communities, so have you talked to?
Yeah, I talked to, I talked to Chief Cannon and Chief O'Reilly. So, yeah, your concern is very accurate on that, as well as, I'd asked them the same thing. What's your plan on that? So their, their fire route is a White Street to head to, to the eastern, eastern streets, which would be McLean and Garfield and Philomenes. They're going to use White Street. And if they're going to the north, they also use White Street to get to Allen Road, to go north on Allen, to get into the near Thunderbolt neighborhood, right? The north neighborhood. So what they'll do is, that route will still be used to continue on down on Road like normal. But they're, if they're trying to get to I-94, which is a lot of calls, instead of making, right now, they come out of Roosevelt, they have to make the Michigan left here, come back around and head west, north.
Yeah.
Head north on Southfield to 94, or further up Southfield, they will just automatically make a left-hand turn at Allen Road now. So when they're going through, lights blaring, they're going to have to make that, that turn there, instead of making a Michigan left and coming around, they're just going to make an automatic left-hand turn.
Got it.
And there they go right now.
There they go.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. Awesome. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? I have a couple things crossing my mind. When you were talking about Tom Murray, I don't know, people don't fully understand all the other hats that many of our employees wear. And Tom's involved, like you said, with the Great Lakes Water Authority, the DCC DMA, as are our police and fire. There's a lot of meetings that go on with that. Tom is also very involved with the Downriver Utility Wastewater Authority, where we have others who are involved within the city. There's a lot of meetings that you attend, there's a lot of meetings that we attend. And so it's not just, these positions are not Monday through Friday, they're not 8:30 to 5:00, or 4:30. They're not two council meetings a month. There's a lot more that's involved in, in running this city, or any city, than many, many people realize. And again, we've got department heads who are spending a lot of time writing grants, finding ways to improve programs, meeting with their compatriots.
Let me jump in real quick, because I know Chief Cannon is involved with the Fire Chiefs' Association, the Downriver Group. I know that Chief Egan is involved with the police officer, or the police chief side of that as well. Plus, he's also, I believe, the chairman of the MNET, which is the undercover group that we have. He was just named the chairman of that, I think recently as well, so I want to make sure to mention that. And also actively involved with the Central Dispatch and the Animal Control, those boards we serve on as well, so. You're absolutely right. But again, as I mentioned, though, the community of our size, we have a responsibility to be part of these groups, because we, we have a voice for 28,000 people.
And if you don't participate, you have no say.
And, and, and Mayor, you're right. You saw what happened when we did not participate for a number of years. You know, we ended up on the short end of the stick a lot of times, because nobody was at the table voicing concerns on our behalf.
Any other comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Motion is carried. We come to public comments. It's open for the public to come up and comment as you would. All we ask is that you provide your name and the street on which you live. We do not want your full address, and the only other thing we ask is that you be nice.
Good evening, City Council Mayor and citizens of Allen Park. Ray Mcgusson Quant. I was at the last meeting, I was a little late. Wasn't able to make my comments, but I listened to your comments. You pleaded for us to come up here and talk while I'm here. Here's a couple of things right off the bat. Take notes. After the lot, the big snowstorm that we had, I don't know who plows in front of our city hall here, but they filled every one of our handicap parking places, every one, with two feet of snow and no place at all. So I have no idea who you hired, and they need to open their eyes and realize what that means. Next thing is, I'm not here to throw my neighbors under the bus, but I'm here to throw my neighbors under the bus. Here's the deal. After that big snowstorm, I want to thank the City of Allen Park for getting out there and plowing, and they should have plowed every one of our neighbors in that kept our cars on those streets during a snow emergency. My neighbor does not park his car in front of his house. He parks his car in front of my other neighbor's house across the street from him, which takes away three parking places, three houses that do not get plowed. And because it was plowed with how much inches of snow, and they come in, they put a six, eight inches of high, you turn the ice the next day. Boy, it was real nice for me to try to get my truck over that. But thank God, I got low gear, and I went out there with a snow shovel and busted that ice off. The same thing happens with the same individuals when it comes to getting their cars off the, off of the road during trash pickup. They leave it, and they, and you know what? Some of the houses don't get picked up. But let's say something about the trash pickup, too. They've been coming in my neighborhood at 8:00 at night, picking up the major trash. So guess who's home? All the residents. Guess where their cars are? They're in the street. Guess what happens when the trash pickup guy comes around? He doesn't pick up the trash. And then he picks around, and he picks those containers up, and he dumps them in the street. He doesn't place them nice, he dumps them there. And then guess what happens? We have an ordinance that says no trash containers on the street. So those neighbors get cited, and they get a ticket. Just has to stop. We got an ordinance, use it. And next thing, I'm going to say this in a real nice way. I want to thank every commissioner and all our commissions, every one of them, for the hard work that they do, for the time they put in without being paid a penny. But they put out expense out of their pocket, and they spend a lot of their free time and personal time taking care of meetings and taking care of the commissions. So I'm going to ask for a couple of things. Please work with our commissions. Work with, work with our people, and go ahead and please inform us on what ordinances you're going to change, and ask for our input. My time's up. I want to thank you for the time. Please answer, okay? Have a great day, and please stay safe. I want to thank you for all the, these couple of years you guys been, boy, it's been interesting, hasn't it?
Yeah.
So to all my citizens out there, please stay safe. Have a great day.
Thank you, Ray.
Thank you for coming.
I've never been front of anything. My name is Lakshmi Savaya. I live in Downriver. I'm also a Realtor. I just came here to get some clarification on the letter that was sent out regarding the inspections. Okay? And I checked with other cities also, but I understand you need 175 for initial inspection and the second inspection. What do you charge for, if they, okay, if they come for the second inspection and something is still missing from their list, what do you charge after that?
I think it would be best if you contacted our Building Department. They would be able to provide you with all the information.
They said I have to come, they said I have to come here to the council and address this. That's, that's one question, okay? And then the next one is, it says here, just so that I can advise the buyer or the seller, it says minimum of $500 for escrow, if the buyer is assuming the repairs, or if the seller is putting the money in escrow for repairs. Minimum is 10% that you would keep, but, I mean, minimum is $500. What if the repairs are 2,000 or 3,000 that they have to put in escrow?
Again, our building, we cannot answer those questions for you. If you would contact our Building Department, call the Building Director's number. If he's not in, leave a voice.
Who's the person I would?
That, that would be Matt Baker, and the number is on our city's website. Sorry, I don't have that handy for you at the moment.
No, that's okay. That's all right. And I'll find it. Matt Baker, did you say?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, that's, and, so even with that 10% thing that I have to go to them, or would you, are you responsible for this?
This, this all comes under our Building Department. The program is under our Building Department, and many of those questions, Matt will be able to answer for you. They may even be available online. I know that they've posted a large document online, I think that will answer many of those questions for you and for our residents. But if you'll call Matt, he or someone in his department will be able to answer all the questions that you have.
And one last question is, again, this is to do with that also, but who decides all this? You guys? I mean, gentlemen, sorry, and miss ma'am?
The, the resolution was passed back in 2019 by the previous council after a long consideration, I believe, by Legal Affairs Committee. That was reviewed at that time. It's, I'm trying to remember, because I sat on that committee. Most of the cities around us have that, is for the protection of both the buyer and the seller, and I think you'll find that many of the items on the checklist are things that we as homeowners ought to be looking at to make sure that we're up to date with smoke alarms, et cetera, et cetera. Again, I can't answer any of the questions that you have in detail. Please call Matt Baker, and he will be able to assist you.
I have a phone number if you want to copy. Don't.
Thank you.
It's 313.
313.
928.
928.
4441.
4441. Okay. Only because I'm also part of a citizen here, a resident and citizen, I was just wondering why none of the cities charge, keep 10% of the escrow amount as a non-refundable. Escrow is mainly for repairs.
I can't answer that question for you. I, I can't. I know that we looked at other surrounding cities. I know that we were very concerned about not emulating some of the cities who had higher restrictions, who had higher requirements. As I recall, Dearborn has quite an extensive home sale inspection.
Oh, yeah.
We did not want to emulate that. But this goes back over four years ago that we were looking at that.
But the escrow money is for the people to get it back after the repairs.
I can't answer that for you. Please call Mr. Baker.
Okay. I will.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. There's no other public coming forward. We will close public comments and move on to the consent agenda. Tonight's consent agenda consists of purchasing actions, which are claims and accounts and a payroll report, and a finance action, which is to approve the requests from the Knights of Columbus Father Sailor Council to hold their annual Tootsie Roll Sale on April 8th, 9th, and 10th. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Lally. Second by Mr. Valerius. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Resolution one, to approve the IGA between Wayne County and the City of Allen Park for improvements to Gingerbread Tot Lot. Mr. Hawkins.
Thank you. The, as you can see from the memo and the agenda, and if you're aware of the past, we've been, I don't know the right word, awarded might not be the right word, but we're getting $55,000 for the current fiscal year, for, from the county's fiscal year, for physical improvements to parks and recreation. We held last year's $55,000 in case the Kennedy Park needed additional funding, and we also named Gingerbread Park. But since the Kennedy is all being covered by CDBG, we now have $110,000, and we also have a large portion of the tiles, because every time we, we put these safety tiles in, they never cut it right close, so you end up with one left, or any, there's always a pile left. So with the pile that we have and this amount of money, this is a tot lot. We're going to put the same safety surfacing in and bring this together, so that there's no local community funds used. It'll all be county funds.
I have a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Levin.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Blevins.
Second.
Second by Mr. Marcos. Any questions? Mr. Hawkins?
I have one more thing so I don't have to walk back up.
Okay.
We're hosting the High School Regionals and following this meeting at eight o'clock, the Cabrini Riverview Consortium Hockey Team will be playing at eight o'clock tonight. Tomorrow, the Allen Park High School Hockey Team will be playing. And if they both win, one will be playing on Friday and one will be playing on Saturday, okay? But anyway, there's a game tonight right across the street.
Wonderful, thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion as carried. Resolution two, to approve, excuse me, to approve the city administration's recommendation that the bid for the 2022 Road Pavement Replacement Project be awarded to the lowest qualified bidder, Hard Rock Concrete, in the amount of $1,716,170. We have a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Lally. Supported by Mr. Schleck.
This is the bidder. We've met with Hard Rock Concrete's owner, Tony Grimaldi. He's here with us tonight. We've gone through a lot of different questions with him to make sure that he is generally standing up how the program operates here in Allen Park and what our expectations are. I think earlier tonight, he was able to meet with council in the pre-meeting work session and I think also address any concerns that council had. I think the recommendation for Hard Rock, well, we're looking forward to timeliness as being a lot quicker in getting some of the projects done, which would be great for the residents as they'll be able to be this, I don't know what the word I'm looking for now, out of their driveway, less time is key for us as well.
Less inconvenience.
Less inconvenience, absolutely. And cleanliness has also been a concern and Tony is well aware of those concerns and what we're looking for. So we're, myself and Tom making this recommendation to mayor and council. The roads that we're looking to do, section one is Park Avenue from Champagne Road to Angelique Avenue. Section two is Rosedale Boulevard from Moore Road to Wick Road. And section three is going to be Philamine Boulevard from Park Avenue to Colwell. We were not too sure we were going to be able to get Philamine in based on early estimate, estimates, but when the bids came back in, we'll be able to get Philamine in and it's definitely a needed stretch of roadway as well. Timeline for starting, we were kind of joking in the back, but we will not be doing the section of Rosedale near Wick while the school's still in session or during the Cabrini Festival. So we're looking at Park Avenue probably being the first street and that'll be sometime in June. And then we anticipate them moving there to Philamine and then to Rosedale last. So we're excited to have Tony and Hard Rock Concrete, highly recommended from a number of our colleagues in Livonia, Garden City, and Woodhaven, all use them. I'm familiar with them myself when I worked in Woodhaven, a very clean and very quick operation.
Any questions from council? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion as carried.
And real quick, Matt Baker was not feeling well this afternoon, evening. That's why he's not here tonight. Normally, he'd be here to answer the questions for the residents.
Move on to council comments. This evening, Mr. Schleck is our leadoff.
Thank you, mayor. It will be quick. Thank you, citizens that came up to address this with their concerns. That's always appreciative. Only thing I have to add is that last Thursday, Economic Development Committee, Matt, that committee is the committee that's going to be in charge of talking and discussing what's going to happen in the site that's known as Allen Park Theater. We will have another meeting eventually after the demolition or shortly before. That's going to be to be determined, but I welcome any citizens to come to that meeting and hear that discussion that will happen. And more to be determined on the contents of that meeting. Also to say, we also invited three members of the VDA to be joining that committee with council being the final decision makers. So they will also be part of that discussion. So again, I welcome any members of the committee to come to hear that discussion and we'll have a section in that committee to ask citizens their opinion. Any other documents on this that has happened? There's, it's all been public. It's all been published on the website. Things have been published on Facebook, so there is nothing, you know, hiding. There's nothing, no meetings have been in the back. Everything's wide open, so if you have any questions as far than what we have done, please feel free to reach out to anyone up here and we will be happy to answer any questions. Other than that, stay safe. Hopefully, the snow that I heard is coming, we'll stay away. God bless, good night, and see you in two weeks.
Thank you. Mr. Blevins?
See, last meeting, I said, please don't come and we got more people talking, so, you know, just saying, you know, it's working. I thank you all for coming out. Just some community events that's going to happen in the future. The Allen Park Drama Club at the high school, they're having a musical coming up in March, 11th, 12th, 18th, and 19th at 7:00 PM at the Center for the Arts, play Mama Mia, as well as on the 13th at 2:00 PM. Also, a great job to our competitive cheer team being district champs. Good job to them, keep up the good work. Just like the mayor was saying, that when you're on council, it's not just two meetings, there's way more meetings that you go to. So if you ever think about running for office, it's more and more meetings than just these two. Just like Gary said, with economic development, we had a meeting with the Dollar Show topic. I thought it was very, very great. Again, please, residents, come to those and other council members and just listen to what we're discussing. Also, the community affairs have been working with the VFW and American Legion and Parks and Recs with Thomas Brand Memorial Park to have a Vietnam memorial over there as well. So there's been things working on throughout the city. Like Mark said, the Historical Commission, planning on events this year, Ice Cream Social like they had last year and different events. So keep a lookout on the Allen Park Facebook page for more events. But again, being liaisons for different groups and stuff like that, there's so much more than just these two meetings and I always encourage everyone to go out and get involved. And again, like Ray said, thank you to all the commissioners that volunteered to help the city out. And if you ever want to get involved, that's the best way to get involved in your city and volunteer. And lastly, I hope everyone has a good few weeks and I can't wait to see everyone in March and I yield.
Thank you. Mr. Marcos?
Thank you. I wanted to thank you two for coming in, speaking. Really appreciate it. Good stuff. Like it. Also, I want to bring attention to a couple of people that work in the city that they're up here a lot and talk, but nobody else recognizes how much they really do. And that's Mark Kibbie and Joe, over here? Can't say it, I'm sorry.
Close enough.
Okay. The time and effort that Mark and Joe put in, you know, Joe for our legal advice and Mark for everything else, and the time and effort that they put into the city, the money that they're always hunting for and looking for and trying to find to put things together, it is not a nine-to-five job by any means for these guys. So I really appreciate you guys' work. It's great. Also wanted to mention these paving projects that we just wrote a resolution that we wrote for, this $1.7 million. Everybody in this city, I think, has complaints about some street somewhere. You're not alone, believe me. $1.7 million doesn't go a whole long way. And it's a planned project and it's street by street and I hear the complaints, I see them, I live on them. So I know what it's like. Be patient with us, we're getting there. Streets are getting done. It's a slow process and it's very expensive, but we're getting there. So again, and thank you guys for coming in, appreciate it.
Thank you, Dennis. Mr. Lally?
Couldn't have said it any better. I don't have to say anything. I want to, first of all, I want to congratulate Tom Murray for being a vice president. I know you'll do a good job there. Congratulations, Tom. And the second of all, I think Mr. Councilman Blevins already said something about the park. I'm going to elaborate a little bit more. I don't know, I don't know who was, there's the park right there, the flags, and they're going to have a Vietnam memorial and they're asking for sponsorship. And you know, they have a white and blue sponsorship, Stars and Stripes, and Monumental sponsorship. So if you want to sponsor $500 and more, it will get you, it'll be a name over there with all the people that sponsored. So far, we got already about $10,000 for doing it, but it takes more than that to do the wall. And Pat, he knows, he's the one that told me about it and I kind of liked it. And then I got the Mike, I mean, Matt Valer's involved and Blevins on the labor, no labor relations. Community affairs. This is part of the community affairs, but the American Legion, the VFW, and the Elks is the one that's going to be doing all the, trying to get sponsors and then help. Anybody, and then we got medals here that's going to be for sale. That's $25 donation. I think we got it already on Facebook, is that correct?
Not yet.
Okay, but it will be on Facebook and with the names and everything else where you could get the medals and everything. So if you need some, go to Parks and Recreation and see Pat Hawkins. He will gladly give you some to sell. Other than that, I just want to thank everybody for coming tonight. I appreciate Ray coming in. Thank you. Now you make me feel a little bit better, you know? That's great. And all the work that we pour out there that brings them in. Marcos, I have to thank him for starting that stuff. Have a good night and thank you. I yield my time.
Thank you. Mr. Lloyd?
I just want to echo the thanks to citizens coming up and speaking tonight. And this kind of coincides with the other thing I'm hearing is the hard work that our department heads and Mark and Joe do, because oftentimes when you come up and pose questions to us, we in turn pose them to our department heads and then come back to it. So ma'am, I have absolute confidence that Matt Baker will be able to answer all your questions. He is a very diligent individual. And I know when this actually passed in 2019, I was a member of the audience at that time and it was contentious then. There was a number of real estate agents at that time that got up and made their piece about it. And I understand that in your particular line of work, this is something that makes it more challenging. I understand that. But I also think, even though I was not the person that voted on that, I think that this is something that's really important to making sure that, it's one of those ways that we can, as a community, make sure that our homes are staying up to a certain standard, that we're keeping that throughout time. And that is, I think that it's a very important step. And I'm actually, I'm very thankful for Matt, Matt Baker, and then our new hire, who is, Steve Wood, who's going to be able to make that possible. Because I think that that's something that, it's one of those decisions that I think will echo down the years and make this, continue to make this a great place to live in Oona Home. So I think long-term it'll be helpful. Ray, again, appreciate coming up and giving us feedback as always. I've had a similar issue with my garbage not getting picked up until late at night. But I will say this again, that GFL has done a phenomenal job of responding to our issues when we've had them. If I know Mark, he's already made a note and he'll get that, he'll make a comment and hopefully have that resolved. I know that part of the issue is the time in which that they are doing it. It's not as if they're, you know, taking extended lunch breaks. So staffing issues, things that are difficult, that might be beyond control, but I'm sure that it'll get looked into and I appreciate you coming up and bringing those concerns to us. Other than that, everybody have a good night. I yield.
Mr. Hilarious?
Nice to see you.
Again, and ma'am, thank you for coming out and voicing your concerns and questions. And as fellow council member Dan said, don't hesitate, call Matt Baker, he'll have answers to your questions. I was glad I was able to supply you with that number. Other than that, I have nothing left to say. Going last always has its thing. I was going to steal Mark's thunder and just say, thank you all for coming out, good night and God bless, but I'll leave that for him, so. But I yield my time, thank you.
Mike, is there anything?
Actually, Mike's going to say something. Just to warn you, Ray's been coming around to meetings for like over 15 years. If they plow and those spots are covered again, you're just going to hear about it. That's all I'm going to tell you. He'll point it out, but God bless people like Ray. Over my 26 years here, there's, how do I politely say this? There's always a wiser person out in the audience. Thank God we have people like that that have been around and unfortunately, Ray's one of the last of the Mogeans. Charles, you might remember, Jack Ted, Curtis. Really, you're one of the last ones, so keep it up, Ray. Remember, I'm not on council when they are, they are.
Wait, I'm trying to pass the buck now.
Other than that, thank you all for coming out. God bless you. Good luck.
Well, even though you were last councilperson, I'm always last and I'm left with very little to say. But I'm glad for the people who came out and glad to see some familiar faces. Do want to mention, and so my councilmembers know, that today I put in the mail a letter to a Mr. John Williams, who is a resident at Maple Heights. Mr. Williams was in the paper last year when he turned 100 years old. He is a naval veteran who survived Pearl Harbor. He will be celebrating his 101st birthday on February 27th. And I have sent him a congratulatory letter and I hope to send him a letter next year. I was also going to mention our Allen Park Cheer Team that made the News Herald. We seem to have been, we have a tradition going here in Allen Park with our cheerleading team, which I think is a reflection of the hard work that all of these individuals put in and the great coaching that they have. There's probably a lot of other things that ran through my mind as I was sitting here listening to all of you, but I appreciated all of your comments. I appreciate everyone who's been here and of course, as always, I appreciate all of our city employees, particularly in these last few days when we had a snow emergency. There's a lot of plowing that goes on. It would be a lot easier if people would follow the rules. If somebody would just give me a book of tickets, I'd be more than happy to go out there. But they haven't done that yet. And all we can do is encourage people to please follow the rules, get off of the street, find somewhere to park until we pass through. It's for everybody's benefit and safety. We sure would not want to have an emergency vehicle not be able to get through your street because you couldn't find it in your heart to follow the rules. And so if you would just And so if you would just consider something as simple as that, it's for safety reasons. And with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Blevins.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lally, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We are adjourned at 6:50. Have a good evening.